I appreciate the audience's indulgence of the Board as it delayed for ten minutes to, in order to accommodate the Student Learning Service work that was before us at six. They did a great job and so it drove us about ten minutes late. Supervisor Fisher, would you lead us in an invocation?
Let's bow our heads. Dear Honorable Father, we thank you for this day, for our many blessings, and for this area in which we live. We ask your blessing and care for the men and women of our armed services, serving at home, and especially those serving around the world, to protect our freedoms. We also ask for your care and comfort for those who are suffering from natural disasters here in the United States or around the world. And Father, we ask that you work with us and guide and direct us in our business for the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman Dehaven, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand, face the flag for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I know.
The opportunity of the agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are no additions.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess makes the motion. Second by Supervisor Dehaven, any discussion? Hearing not all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Out off the following tabs, the Board's consideration, Tab C, it's a resolution recognizing H.P. Hood, Tab E, Public Works Committee Report, and Tab F, Public Safety Communications Committee Report.
Questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There are motions by Supervisor Dehaven to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion? Hearing not all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no. The consent agenda is approved. Next is citizen comments for Agenda Items Only, they're not subject to a public hearing. It's my understanding that there may have been a lot of people who signed up to speak to the dog kennel issue later on. We did have a public hearing at our last meeting. I would ask you not to speak unless you have new information, not to repeat your prior performance. And if you do choose to speak, we'll strictly enforce tonight the three-minute limit. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first person is Melissa Burke.
Good evening. I wasn't here at the previous meeting, so I don't know what was said, but I will be very brief. A kennel in the neighborhood does not add value or protect the quality of the neighborhood. Doing some Internet research, I could find nothing that states that a kennel improves value and general welfare of the surrounding neighbors. Comments from realtors on various sites, both real estate sites and appraisal sites, indicate that barking dogs can negatively impact home value. Finally, allowing a business here does set a precedent for other businesses to be approved, potentially further eroding the quality of life. I look to the Board of Supervisors to uphold the community as it has been established and intended by the people who live there. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Ed Coleman, Attorney for the Opposition.
Mr. Coleman, you got me in trouble last time, so three minutes, sir.
(inaudible). My name is Ed Coleman. I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Berman. They reside at 247 Laurel Grove Drive, adjacent property to this property. I'm not going to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, and I do appreciate the consideration the Board's going to give to this later this evening. I ask that the Board consider the effect on property values, which is sort of almost common knowledge. What I've handed out was something because in the minutes of the last meeting, Mr. Haslett, one of the property owners, mentioned that he and the Bermans and the Rushes resided in a three-lot subdivision, and what I've handed out to the Board is a platte, it's taken from the Frederick County GIS map, it's also part of this application. And I've outlined in red, or bracketed in red, the three lots, that the Bermans, they live on one of those lots, Mr. Haslett and the Rushes, and then there's two additional lots closer to the Neff property. All five of those lots are subject to restrictive covenants, which the second page of the hand out contains those restrictive covenants, and they are single-family use only. Now, the only point of this is Mr. Haslett had stated, and it unfortunately didn't appear in the minutes, that this neighborhood, and particularly the three lots, the Bermans, the Hazeltts, the Rushes live on, and then the two lots that are also shown close to the Neffs, those are estate-type lots with estate-type restrictive covenants, single-family use only, 2,000 square feet, minimum houses, no home occupations permitted. And interestingly enough, it's my understanding that the three houses that are built on the Berman, Haslett, and Rush lots were built by Mrs. Neff's grandfather. And in fact, these restrictive covenants that apply to those three lots were imposed by Mrs. Neff's grandfather. The point of this is that while this is zoned rural agricultural, it is in fact a residential area and should be considered as such. And that leads us to the conditions. The conditions that are imposed are to be performance standards, to mitigate any negative impacts on property values. And we would submit, based on the handout that we provided that was duplicated in the minutes of the last meeting, that the conditions, although they've increased from eight to thirteen, they have not established effective conditions, effective standard, performance standards, that would protect the adjoining property owner's property values. And included in that is we now have a standard that 28 dogs are going to be permitted, and three can be outside at a time, unattended. Now, conceded, the staff has come up with some noise abatement procedures for the building, but still the outside is going to be a real noise problem. And I would ask that you take that into consideration when you do your deliberations. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I live in the neighborhood. I live about a half a mile from where they're proposing to put this kennel in. All I have to say is I moved there and I stay there because I want the quiet and solitude of my residential area. I don't want to listen to barking dogs. I have a dog. I spend a lot of time training it, so it doesn't do that. And I would like to just be left to my quiet and solitude.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
I also was not here for the last meeting, so please forgive me if this is in some sense a repetition of what was presented then. I've not seen the notes. I live at 189 Saddleback, which, if you're traveling on the roads, is not exactly next door, but if you look at an aerial map, it's actually one of the closest properties to this proposed kennel. And again, residential neighborhood. My wife and I bought this property less than a year ago with the idea that somehow the solitude and the quiet was going to be a big part of our retirement. And not only for ourselves, but for our children and our grandchildren who live in the hustle and bustle of Washington, D.C. And even friends who need to come there as a place of respite. Having a kennel there doesn't exactly conform to what we thought we were buying into. So I've come to speak to that particular issue. First of all, let me just say that I know that the material has been presented to this Board, or this Council, that there is a measurable deterioration in property value associated with kennels in the neighborhood. And obviously, that's going to have some impact on me and on my children, when eventually the house is sold after we've departed. But there's also, I have a question about the fiscal responsibility here in three different angles. First of all, are the people who are putting up the kennel willing to actually pay for the decline in our property values? Second of all, is there some way in which the decline in those property values is going to negatively impact the tax base of Frederick County? And third of all, I'm not at all clear on the law in this regard. The members of the Board may be indemnified, but if you're not, I'd be concerned about the possibility that there would be an impact on your own financial situations if, in fact, it can be demonstrated that the impact of this kennel has declined other people's investments. Last but not least, I do understand there's some kind of noise abatement procedure that's been approved. One of the things in my background, though at the moment I'm a nonprofit executive and ordained minister, is that I was actually a sound engineer. This is a very primitive decibel meter. I would like to know what the noise abatement standards are, and believe me, I will find a place from which to measure those, that's on public property. It involves not only the level of decibels, but the distance from the sound source. So this will be monitored. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Charlene Anderson's my wife. She's had knee surgery and she can't stand very long, so I have a letter she'd like for me to read. We have rented out the house for Mom at 496 Laurel Grove Road to a Henry Hawkins. They've lived in Frederick County for quite a while, and they were looking forward to coming over here and renting our property. But since they have found out about the kennels, they are a little skeptic. They like the area, the neighbors and everything, but they are not in favor of the dog kennel. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
I'm Beth Ann Berman, and I was asked to read a letter on behalf of a neighbor who could not be here. Mr. Wayne Mitchell. Unfortunately, I cannot attend because of my work, but I believe approving a kennel in anyone's rural community is wrong. I ask, how does this affect you that don't live on Laurel Grove Road? I love dogs, but I live down the street from a kennel in Brunswick, Virginia, and didn't like the noise. I have lived at 532 Laurel Grove Road for nine years now, and I hope that this does not become an issue for us. I would like to keep the peace and quiet that we paid for when we moved into this county. I don't believe that a kennel has to be located in a rural community, and don't know why they can't be located in a business-zoned area. This can be, and in most cases is, a very loud business practice. And businesses should be operated in a zoned commercial industrial area, period. You have the ability to grant this, but I feel it would be prejudicial to us that don't want this business located in our community. Thank you, Wayne Mitchell. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
I just have one thing that I wanted to mention tonight. Mr. Berman had said he researched a kennel in another area. I myself looked around, and I found a 25-dog capacity kennel in a surrounding county. That kennel employs one full-time, two part-time, and three prison-release workers to maintain 25 dogs. I don't understand how two people can handle 28 dogs, especially if they work from outside the home. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Tony Wolf.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Tony Wolf, I'm representing Virginia Tech's Agricultural Research and Extension Center. I'm the director of that facility there. Our property, 124 acres, is immediately west of the subject property. We've pulled our faculty and staff, and our position on the kennel is actually one of neutrality. I wanted to speak to you this evening about that, just so that our position is known. We're extremely sympathetic of the neighbors, the landowners, whose property may be affected by this dog kennel. But our position is one that we work at our facility 10 to 12 hours a day. We're not there during the night most of the time. And we operate orchard sprayers. We have clientele, our stakeholders, that come and go throughout the day, create a fair amount of traffic on Laurel Grove Road. And we feel we'd be hypocritical to be in opposition of perceived noise from a facility next to us. We don't feel like the kennel would affect our ability to do research and extension missions, but again, we are sympathetic to the neighbors, and we would hope that whatever decision this Board makes, we have an opportunity in the future to evaluate the situation more thoroughly. If there's a need to make amends or to change our position on that, we will, but we don't see a perceived threat to it at this point. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Matt Milstead, Russell 150, Herndon, Virginia.
Good evening, Chairman. Mr. Fisher, thank you for your prayer at the beginning of the meeting. I am Matt Milstead. I'm with Heritage Commons. We are a real estate development company that has been working for the past year here in the county, as most of you know, we've met with most of you. And we've been prepared, really since last fall, to submit a rezoning application that would allow us to move forward and take what is right now a piece of property that's been sitting, you know, desolate and undeveloped and really an eyesore for years, and turn it into a mixed-use project that generates not only jobs, but, as our studies show, tax revenue to the county. There'll be approximately $4 million a year for the foreseeable future. As I said, we've been, well, we have gone around. We've met with community organizations, with our local neighbors, most of you all, and we've had nothing but support across the board for what we're trying to do on this piece of property. You know, we're ready, prepared, and been waiting against, really, again, since last fall, to bring millions of dollars of investment into the county to create even more millions of dollars of value across the board. And quite frankly, we're getting pretty frustrated as we sit here almost a year since we started trying to do this and not knowing where we're going to go. There was an article recently in the paper regarding the CDA and the CDA taxes, and, you know, our interpretation is pretty flawed, pretty inaccurate. It is not a true representation of what the situation is regarding the current landowner and the CDA. And what, you know, we see on the agenda that this will be some form of discussion on this topic, I just wanted to let you all know. We continue to be here. We continue to spend a lot of money in this county, and a lot of, you know, contractors, consultants, engineers, lawyers, et cetera. And we're prepared to continue to spend multiple millions more. And when everybody wants this to happen, and everybody sees value in this, why we still stand here and are not allowed to move forward, I don't understand why the county's not allowing us to move forward. I realize there's multiple parties involved, but at the end of the day, the county is what's keeping the landowner from able to sell to us the property, allow us to bring the investment, not only internal but external, to the county. So these are new dollars coming in, not recycled dollars locally. I know, again, we've met with you all, you understand that. I wanted to reiterate our position, that we're ready to go, but we're getting highly frustrated. We've already lost some clients, and how much longer we're going to hang around waiting for the county to allow us to do a good thing here, I don't know. Thanks.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Earl Cole, Russell 150, Baltimore, Maryland.
Chairman Chickle, Supervisors, appreciate the opportunity to share with you. My counsel told me that I have three minutes. To sort of warn you ahead of time, I'll use every minute of it. Trust me. Again, my name is Earl Cole. I work for a firm in Baltimore, Maryland. We're a small company. We have about 20 employees. We used to be a very big company, then the credit crisis hit, then we weren't so big. We were quite small. In 2006, we invested $20 million of our company's money. Actually, it wasn't our money. We're a public company. We have shareholders. So we invested $20 million of our shareholders' money in this county. We invested it in the project that's known as Russell 150. Well, we're in the lending business, right? We're lenders. And you know what? We made a bad investment, as it turns out. The developer that's supposed to develop that project didn't develop it. He didn't pay us back. So we did what lenders do when they don't get paid back, right? We foreclosed on our lien. And then we became, by default, the landowner, right? When a lender becomes the landowner, it made a mistake. But we're here. Fortunately, fortunately, we were able to get back $14 million of the $20 million of our shareholders' money, fortunately. But as we sit here today, we're owed $6 million. Now, banks don't make good landowners. If you want somebody to hang around, right, because it doesn't know what to do with land, and hold it and sit on it, we're good at that, right? Because we're a bank. We don't know how to develop it. But we have found someone, a developer, that knows what to do with it, and wants to build bridges and roads and office buildings, jobs, places to eat, these sorts of things. We want to sell it. We want to sell it, sell this land. All that we ask of the gentleman that wants to buy our property is that he pay us back our $6 million, so I can pay my $6 million to the shareholders of my company. However, what's happened is, the treasurer of this county says, "No, wait a minute. You owe the county $2 million of fees and penalties." Now, the only person, the only company that put any money into this project is my company, Uni-Me. We're the only one that invested any money. We want to get our $6 million back. But the treasurer has decided that before we get our $6 million back, he's owed $2 million, you are owed $2 million. Well, let me tell you, that is absolutely wrong. It's absolutely fair. Do you want me to finish or not?
No, sir.
Okay.
I've got a lot of people that I'm going to have to...
It's absolutely wrong. It's absolutely unfair. And what I'd like the county treasurer and the county to do is, you got your hand out like this now, asking for a handout. I'm asking you all to pull your hand back and extend it again to me in a handshake, and say, "Thanks for spending your $6 million. Spend another $30 or $40 million, and bring us $100 million in taxes, and get our perspective." Because we got it all wrong. You've got it wrong, and you've got $2 million that isn't owed to you, ahead of the opportunity to have hundreds of millions of dollars in taxes. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Tina Lake, back on the dog kennel.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Tina Lake. I live in Clearbrook. I'm in the Stonewall District, and I have known and worked with Jessica Neff for the last 14 years. I would like to speak in support of the kennel for her. During my tenure with her, I have known her to be a very high morale, very high, sorry, a little nervous, very high morale character. She is very business savvy and has an outstanding work ethic. I believe that she'll do an outstanding job as the owner of a kennel. She is a very compassionate and caring person, both to people and animals. She takes into consideration the environmental concerns and the concerns of her neighbors. Since this is a conditional use permit, I know that she is very motivated to uphold these conditions that you guys have set before her. I know that she did not jump into this half-heartedly, but she did her research to make sure that her kennel will be a success. I know she is in no way trying to impose on her neighbors, but instead to provide a safe place for animals to stay when their owners are on vacation. I hope that she is able to do this. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charles Harmon from Lake Frederick to speak to private streets.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, my name is Charlie Harmon, and I reside at Lake Frederick in Opecan District, I'm sorry. I want to speak to the private road request for our Shenandoah community currently before the county. I'm speaking on behalf of some of the community's residents, a number of are here behind me tonight. Being respectful of the Board's time and agenda, we have selected only two residents to speak on the community's behalf. Our current residents have all bought homes expecting a private gated age-restricted community of some 2100 residences. However, given recent changes in market conditions, completing the full development of our community will require addressing the market for both age-restricted and non-restricted. In the revised master plan for this mixed community, almost two-thirds of the roads and streets will continue to be private, factoring in both the age-restricted sections and the townhome sections in the non-restricted community. The ordinance change and application approved requested by a developer, Landsdowne Development Group, will allow the construction of private roads and the remaining third of the development. This will enable us to keep the gated community design we all bought into and avoid what could be management and coordination challenges in a mixed community of private and public streets. For example, consider the challenges associated with both road maintenance and snow removal. BDOT and our private contractors will have to determine where at various intersections one's responsibilities ends and the others begins. As the next speaker will address, we fully understand the financial obligations of the HOA for private street repairs and maintenance, and we all bought our properties with full disclosure of those obligations. As evidenced by the turnout, you see it as a very important issue, not only to our current community, but to the larger community in the future. We ask the Board of Supervisors to bring this matter to conclusion by scheduling a public hearing on the private road request for Shenandoah that is now before the community, approving the recommended ordinance change to allow the application to install private streets in our five communities, and approving Landsdowne's application to install private streets throughout the Shenandoah community. We believe approval of Landsdowne's application will be in the long-term interest of all parties, the 300-plus current residents, the new homeowners that will become part of this exceptional community, and the taxpayers of Frederick County. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Raymond to speak to private streets, Lake Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. I am Michael Raymond. I reside at Lake Frederick in Opecan District, and I would specifically like to speak to the issue of the HOA's ability to fund and desire to fund private street maintenance and repairs. During my three-year stint as vice chairman of our HOA Executive Committee, I was asked to lead two studies on the current and future obligations of the HOA. The first, in 2011, focused on the HOA's long-term obligations for maintenance and operations of amenities, common grounds, and through information we collected from reserve studies in comparable communities, also estimated the funding requirements for private street repair and maintenance. As it relates to private streets, the bottom line of that study was a determination of how street repair and maintenance reserves could be funded with minimal impact on our HOA homeowners by redirecting a portion of the HOA's unmarked reserve funds to a segmented private reserve fund, and then continuing to contribute to that fund a portion of the HOA's annual sizable contribution to our long-term capital reserves. In the second study, beginning in 2012, I was the project leader of a team of nine homeowners, established to work with Landsdowne Development in their discovery phase prior to purchasing the Lake Frederick property. Bottom line of that 10-month-long effort was a substantial modification to the developer's original plan for the community. First, to increase the number of age-restricted residences in the master development plan to assure our community would be of sufficient size to fund all of our dedicated amenities and community-specific obligations. Second, to define an administrative framework that would allow the HOAs of the age-restricted and non-restricted communities to share the cost of common facilities and services, including private street maintenance and repairs. I share these two efforts with you to demonstrate how seriously our community takes its commitment to, and most importantly, understanding of the obligations of a gated, private-street community. We fully understand that community growth is the key to affordability of all our amenities and obligations, and that a key enabler of that growth is expanding our community to address the market for both age-restricted and non-restricted housing within a single gated, private-street community design. So we ask the Board of Supervisors, again, to bring this matter to a conclusion, first by scheduling public hearings on the private road request that has been before this county for almost a year and a half now, approving the recommended ordinance change to allow for the application to install private sheets in our five communities, and approving Landsdowne's application to install those private streets throughout the Shenandoah community. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Bruce Clark with the Kennel.
I spoke at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Rowley.
Scott Berman, Kennel.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'll be brief for my remarks. First off, from the last meeting, I would like to ask the Board to consider adding my remarks to the minutes, if that's possible. If not, I understand. I also would like to make a correction from the previous public meeting that was held. There was a statement made by the Board, or a member of the Board, somewhat tongue-in-cheek about pig farms. I'm here to tell you, pigs don't... about pig farms. I'm here to tell you, pigs don't bark. I grew up on a farm, 250 acres plus. I've raised cattle. I've raised pigs. I butchered pigs, butchered cattle, the whole nine yards, inconsequential to what we're here to discuss today about kennels, period. The research facility, while I appreciate their attendance and I can fully appreciate their neutrality, for them, they actually have added value. The work that they do is actually related to royal, royal living. They conduct their work to benefits of many of the community owners and farmers in the area without having any type of negative impact, specifically noise, and even the traffic is negligible. And last but not least on that point is that the research facility is also affiliated with educational rural activities. It's not a commercial enterprise, and that is what we're here discussing. And although I can appreciate the, the efforts of the individuals involved in trying to follow their dreams and wanting to conduct business, there is a time and place for these. Just because you can doesn't mean that you should, and I think that the residents there as a community, as a rural community, we have a strong sense of what that represents. And I'm here to tell you, it was estate living. We fully accept the rural living of cows, farms, and yes, we even have pigs out there. And that's all well and good. But when you go down the kennel of a, a commercialized business with a kennel with all the facts presented, I would respectfully ask for your strong considerations to make sure that we're doing the right thing by all parties. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Next, Mr. Riley.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, April 23, 2014.
Move for approval, submitted, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, April 23, 2014, are approved. Next is the work session with Social Services, April 29, 2014.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a motion by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Deaven. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the work session with Social Services, April 29, 2014, are approved. Next, our committee appointments, and I am trying to get there. All right, we have quite a list this evening. Looks like on the first one, the Agricultural District Advisory Committee... Do we get recommendations or we need to find three folks, Mr. Riley?
We need to find two. We appointed Mr. Watt last meeting, so that is not a magisterial district appointment. So if the board needs help, we'll be glad to assist.
Well, let's, let's do everything and assume that the board might have trouble funding people. Historic Resources Advisory Board Supervisors, Collins is not here. That's Redbud. Parks and Recreation is Redbud. Historic Resources Advisory, Shawnee, are we ready?
No, sir. I'm not ready yet.
Extension Leadership, Stonewall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reappoint William H. Klein, Stonewall District Representative, to the Extension Leadership Council.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. William H. Klein is reappointed to the Extension Leadership Council. Mr. Riley, do we know if Mr. Perry is willing to re-serve?
I will contact him. Mr. Chairman, I have not done that.
I neglected to do that and should have. Parks and Recreation, Stonewall.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Randy Carter, Stonewall District Representative, Parks and Rec Commission.
All right, we have a motion to reappoint. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Randy Carter is reappointed to Stonewall District Parks and Recreation Commission. Board of Building Appeals, County Representative, Mr. Riley, I also did not ask you, but do we know Mr. Kenny's desire to re-serve? He is eligible?
He is eligible, Mr. Chairman. He serves that professional trade. I have not officially contacted him, but I do not see any opposition from him wanting to continue.
I guess I would like the board to go ahead and to recommend his appointment. Is that an appointment or a recommendation, Mr. Riley?
Appointment.
Okay. I'll take a chance on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to reappoint Kevin Kenny to the, as the county representative to the Board of Building Appeals.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton and a second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Riley, apologize to him for my taking him for granted, but thank him.
We will.
All right. The development impact model. Mr. Riley, are a set number of people or not?
These, this is a set number of people representing different agencies, the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, the School Board, Economic Development Commission, and the Building Trades through Top of Virginia. The only individual that we need to refill, if it's the board's pleasure, would be a representative from EDC, and you may want to wait on that until the EDA is fully comprised.
That was my point. Can we, can we pass judgment on the other folks and not that one?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, there's a note that, that staff's waiting for a recommendation from Top of Virginia for their representative. You might, might want to wait on that one as well.
Two of them. Those that are presented, Mr. Tierney, Mr. Lofton, Mr. Hess, Mr. Manuel, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Lamanna, Mr. Pettler. Does the board wish to take an action?
Mr. Pettler's part of Top of Virginia.
Hurry.
Mr. Pettler's part of Top of Virginia's representation.
Two of them.
They have two. If it makes us three, we're going to wait.
All right. I'm easy.
I was second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tierney, Mr. Lofton, Mr. Hess, Mr. Manuel, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Lamanna are the ones that he has made a motion for, correct? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Those folks are reappointed. Community Policy and Management Team, we have a recommendation. It is...
Dana Bowman.
Dana Bowman?
Yes.
Dana Bowman. I was looking for it. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to reappoint Dana Bowman, Private Provider Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Dana Bowman is reappointed. Now, the EDA, I would suggest we probably leave this one alone for a little bit as well.
Yes, sir. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. All right. Lord Fairfax Emergency Medical Services Council, this is a Frederick County representative. She is eligible for reappointment. I did not contact her. Mr. Riley, any knowledge?
Fire and Rescue Association appoints the reap, supports the reappointment, excuse me.
That's a good sign.
Yes, sir.
I would ask the board to appoint her.
Mr. Chairman, I move the appointment of Pamela Keeler as the Frederick County Volunteer Representative on the Lord Fairfax Emergency Medical Services Council.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Hess. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
No. Ms. Keeler is reappointed. Social Services, Back Creek, are we ready?
Yes, sir. I have some feelers out, but I do not have anything yet.
I haven't spoken to Ms. Kimble yet, Mr. Chairman.
A person did approach me over the apple blossom about committee service and in particular mentioned social services, but I've checked to see where she lives. But if Mr. Riley can help me out with that, if it, if it's, you're the only one looking, we'll see.
Right.
It, it could be.
Great. Thank you.
Winchester Frederick County Tourism Board, are we waiting, Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Winchester Regional Jail Authority, Mr. Gene Fisher is the County Board of Supervisors' representative. What's the board's pleasure? He doesn't get to say no.
That's the Airport Authority. Don't put me...
Airport Authority.
Don't put me in jail yet.
I meant, what did I say?
You said the jail. I'm not there.
Subliminal message.
Maybe next time when you graduate. Airport Authority. Pleasure of the board?
We have two nominations there?
We'll take them one at a time.
Okay. I, I've moved to reappoint Mr. Gene Fisher, County Board Rep, to the Airport Authority.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Supervisor Deaven. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And then, Mr. Fisher, do you wish to make the next appointment?
Let me check, Mr. Largent. I'll come back to the next meeting.
Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee, five members, resident property owners, served two years. Mr. Riley, can you help us out? Oh, that's Mr. Lofton. Is this ready for appointment?
No, sir, and I do apologize. Mr. Swimley has resigned. I needed to pass that on to Mr. Riley. I thought he had had that, but obviously the email was just sent to me, so I have two. We are passing out applications. We will be interviewing, and I should have something within a month.
Great. All right, next is the status and any further actions as to item 11 on the Finance Committee report for the May 22, 2013 Board of Supervisors' meeting regarding an amendment to the term sheet special assessment role approved by Russell 150 Community Development Authority. Mr. Riley?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Williams, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly on this item, it, last May, the revised special assessment role and accompanying term sheet for the Russell 150 financing the CDA bonds was before the Finance Committee for the Finance Committee's acceptance. The Finance Committee accepted it. When it went to the board, it went to the board, actually, it was originally proposed as an information item, and a motion was then made and adopted by the board to, quote, "accept the term sheet," which includes the revised special assessment role. The matter before the board this evening concerns the clarity of that action because the term sheet does indicate that the delinquent assessments would be repealed, which would also have the effect of eliminating any penalties and interests that do flow from that. The motion that was passed said that it approved the term sheet, and there's a question as to the clarity of what the board may have intended to do, whether the board only intended to approve the special assessment role. If the board wishes to clarify that, it may do so this evening. That would, if it, if the board does so, it would leave the issue pending as far as the status of the penalties and interests accrued, and of course, the board has heard some public comment tonight on that subject. Certainly, whatever action the board takes tonight does not preclude further discussion with the appropriate parties on that issue going forward, and I'll be glad to take questions.
Questions, Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams, could you opine as to, was the board required to do anything?
I'm not sure that the board was. It's really a CDA matter. The CDA made its proposal, and it, something needed to go forward, although I think, actually, I think I need to restate that, is this was originally proposed going back to 2005 when it was done. It was done as the CDA and the board, so presumably in order to make any change to it, yes, it would have to be the CDA and the board, which kind of puts us in this strange situation that we're in.
Other questions, Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Deaven? I'd move to rescind the Board of Supervisor's action taken at the May 22, 2013 meeting, accepting the term sheet identified as Exhibit A of the Munich Cap Inc. memorandum dated March 13, 2013, and authorizing the county administrator to sign same on behalf of Frederick County, the current motion being to rescind the board's action to the extent that the board's action may be interpreted as having eliminated the collection of penalties and interest on the CDA assessments.
Clarity on the motion? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
This just further, I have to admit, complicates my understanding of where we are, where we thought we were, and where we're going with this whole thing. I've, I've tried to run through these numbers again and follow them through. I get to a point where I get lost, can't keep up with tracking them. Then I read in the paper where the, perhaps the governing body is not authorized to do this. I don't know what we need. Another closed session? We need more legal counsel? But along with Mr. Deaven's motion, I'm not sure I understood what it was we thought we were doing back then with the original resolution, therefore, trying to take advice and move forward with this one, but I'm not sure where we need to go with this thing.
The other discussion. All right, then we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right. Supervisor Wells, we'll do a voice.
Pardon?
We'll do a voice on this one.
My voice on this is, no.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
No.
No.
Chairman votes yes, and so we have a tie. Motion is not approved. Correct, Mr. Riley?
Correct.
All right. Let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Transportation Committee met on April 28, 2014 at 8:30 a.m. There was one action item, and that was the welcome signage discussion. One of the recommendations of the recent Business Friendly Committee was to recommend that welcoming signage be placed at key entrances to Frederick County. For signage along primary routes such as Route 522, 50, 11, the process is fairly simple. The county would need to design the signage, place it in accordance with VDOT standards and practices and with a VDOT permit. Attached, there's a VDOT guideline as well as a memorandum of support for Mr. Riley, which includes example signage, and the committee recommends that we move forward with the CDA. Mr. Riley is seconded by Mr. Fisher, I'm sorry, that we recommend that the board direct the EDA to proceed with signage on the primary routes and to further investigate the options, rented billboards versus county-owned signage, and to include consideration of the water tower, and the motion passed unanimously, and I would so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
I'm a little puzzled about the 81 signage. If memory serves me correctly, if I'm traveling 81, VDOT has placed on their right-of-way signs that indicate there's McDonald's at the next exit, there's a farm market at the next exit, all these activities along 81, and so they're saying that we can't, or they won't put up a sign for us as well in Frederick County.
Specifically, their guidelines do not permit that, yes.
Is there someone we can talk to about maybe those guidelines being changed?
You could always have that discussion.
I certainly think. I would hope that maybe the Transportation Committee would have that discussion because it just seems odd to me that they're promoting Frederick County in so many other ways, and people may not even realize they're in Frederick County.
Part of this is federal as well on the interstate system.
I understand. Thank you.
Other discussion. So where does the motion and to proceed lead us next?
Our, our discussion led us to recommend that the board direct the EDA to proceed on the primaries and to further investigate the rented billboards versus county-owned signage along the interstates, but it has to be on private property. Their current, current VDOT guidelines do not permit within the right-of-way on interstates.
Okay.
And that we also consider signage on, on our water towers.
Kind of a fellow that never likes to push something down the road further until he knows what it's cost. I'm assuming we might be spending EDA money?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't want them to interpret our action as an infliction. If it's their money, they certainly have approval rights over that, so I guess I'm trying to find the happy balance here, not knowing what it's going to cost, do we not?
Well, since we, excuse me, since the EDA has not had input back from the Board and its Transportation Committee, this might be a good discussion item for them, when they convene again, since it's back before them, as to resolution and expense.
Well, I'm certainly in support, I just would prefer the EDA didn't think we said, "do it." Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, as liaison to the EDA, I've been part of the sort of Sign Development Committee, and it's my feeling that the EDA would like to move with putting up signs, but a cost can't be committed to yet because we haven't developed the signage, the size, the scope, so I agree with Mr. Riley, maybe this is a talking point for the next EDA meeting as they move ahead.
Well, I'm not trying to stall it, just trying not to be misinterpreted. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. We ready to vote? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes.
Includes my report, Mr. Chairman, thanks, sir.
All right, next is an outdoor festival permit request. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing before we get away from the committee reports. HR Committee doesn't have a formal report tonight, as we just held our meeting this past Friday. However, I did want to mention one thing in light of the recent work session we had with the County Social Services Department. The HR Committee each month has received a presentation from a different county department outlining the structure of the department, its duties, its responsibilities, and the HR issues faced by their departments. The presentation by Mrs. Green at the Board of Supervisors' work session with the Department of Social Services on April 29 was essentially the presentation made to the HR Committee. I believe the Board received a great deal of useful information from that presentation. The HR Committee has received similar excellent presentations from other department heads that have appeared before us to date. I'd like to ask the Board to at least consider additional work sessions in the future to hear from other departments.
I guess I'd rather you didn't amend the agenda, and I'll put you off until down at the end of the meeting, and let you come back at us with the request for work session. All right, next item is a public hearing, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an outdoor festival permit request of Sarah Fromm for Teens Incorporated Boots and Bluegrass Festival, and this is pursuant to Frederick County Code Chapter 86 Festivals. The festival is to be held June 20, 2014, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on the grounds of Always Green, 2122 North Frederick Pike, Winchester, Virginia. Property is owned by Gas City, 1776 James Marlborough Highway, Leesburg, Virginia.
Any questions of Mr. Riley? Is the applicant here? Did you wish to speak? Any questions for the applicant? All right, then we'll conduct the public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider an outdoor festival permit request of Sarah Fromm for Teens Incorporated Boots and Bluegrass Festival pursuant to the Frederick County Code Chapter 86 Festivals, Section 86-3, permit required, application, issuance, or denial fee for an outdoor festival permit. Festival be held Friday, February 20, 2014, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on the grounds of Always Green, 2122 North Frederick Pike, Winchester, Virginia. Property owned by Gas City, 1776 James Marlborough Highway, Leesburg, Virginia. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this outdoor festival permit request? We'll close the public hearing. I believe this was a, is this Beck Creek? Or no?
Gainesboro. Gainesboro. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this permit.
All right, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells, discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dehaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is another public hearing on a proposed ordinance, salaries of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is pursuant to Section 15.2, 1414.3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. The Board of Supervisors shall hold a public hearing to fix the annual salaries of the Board of Supervisors as follows. Chairman, $10,800 a year. Vice Chairman, $10,200 a year, and each other member of the Board of Supervisors at $9,000 a year.
Questions of Mr. Riley? All right, hearing done, we'll conduct the public hearing. This is a public hearing on the salaries of the Board of Supervisors, and pursuant to Section 15.2-1414.3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, the Board of Supervisors will hold this public hearing to fix the annual salaries of the Board of Supervisors as follows. Chairman, $10,800. Vice Chairman, $10,200, and each other member of the Board at $9,000. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this proposed ordinance? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt the ordinance setting the salaries.
We have a motion to approve, Supervisor Dehaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dehaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, a planning commission public hearing on a draft update of the 2014-2015 public, excuse me, Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plans, and it looks like we will be combining that with the Virginia Department of Taxation and the Board of Supervisors on the secondary system construction. What did it say this time?
Transportation.
Transportation, it's a bad night. Do not repeat me, say what you should say.
I was worried that's what I wrote down. As you noted, Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing for the Interstate Primary and Secondary Road Improvement Plans. This is an annual update, which we undergo. The update of the secondary plan itself is the portion that is code-required, however, we every year also update our interstate and primary plans, so that VDOT may be well apprised of local priorities. I will begin with the Interstate Road Improvement Plan, and I believe, as I note just about yearly, it's not that complicated, since we only have one interstate in Frederick County, and since it's an Interstate Road Improvement Plan, it's pretty simple. But the priorities do remain. Exit 310 improvements, that's a fairly long-term project, though it does have significant funding on it right now, so it remains on the plans until we start to see a lot more progress than has been made so far. Continues to have the Exit 307 relocation, as well as widening along the length of the roadway. Those priorities all remain from previous year and the year before that. I noted earlier the Exit 310 modification. It is going forward fairly well, they're deep into the design process, and I understand they are preparing to begin right-of-way. This is just an overall graphic, which anybody can grab from the VDOT website. I don't expect you to be able to see all the details, but the keynote is, the ramps themselves are being pushed out quite far to allow for the ultimate long-term goal of making this a clover design, cloverleaf design, in which there will be no stoplights as there are today, however, the widening of these ramps will significantly improve our ability to move traffic through that. Now, of course, you can't push out the ramps without adjusting where Tasker Road is, because that's right there on top of everything, so on the bottom of the graphic there, you see that Tasker Road is brought well eastward from where it currently is. I would note that on there, you see Tasker Road has ramp access. That is a temporary situation. Once 37 were to ultimately go through, the actual interchange would be with the future extension of Warrior Drive, which is still further to the east, and not on this graphic. Moving on to the Primary Road Improvement Plan, for those that don't know, primary roads, Route 37, Route 11, Route 50, Route 522, all of our more significant highways in the county. Once again, there has not been an update or a change to your adopted priorities. Route 37 continues to be the top priority, with the segment between Exit 310, which we were just talking about, and Route 522 being the most significant priority. Item four, just as a reminder, that South Frederick Parkway, that's a fairly new addition, that's only been on there for a couple of years now, that would be tying into the Exit 307 relocation. I apologize that the graphics keep flickering, I don't know why that's happening. Moving on, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, the 277 project was the other significant road project that was funded at the same time as the Exit 310 project. Does involve a fairly significant widening of 277 itself, and the Ailer Road relocation. As everybody's well aware, Ailer Road currently comes in right next to the interstate ramps, creating a situation where we have numerous signals all stacked on top of each other, which, to put it in very simple terms, kills your capacity, really hurts your ability to safely deal with any kind of volume of traffic, and of course, that's a busy interchange. So moving that westward, I'm sorry, eastward will help us with that, and on the next graphic, you see the terminus of those improvements, they go from Exit 307 out to Double Church Road. They may raise your eyebrows and say, "Wait, I thought that was supposed to go out to Warrior Drive." Well, it was, however, cost estimates being what they are, the deeper VDOT has gotten to the design process, the less they've found that we're actually able to afford with this round of improvements. Doesn't change the fact that we would like for improvements to continue on beyond this and out to our county line all the way, frankly, but this is what we can afford with the current funding on the project. Moving on to the Secondary Road Improvement Plan, first off, we have the Frederick County, what we call the major road improvements. Secondary roads are all those roadways 600 and above numbered, so you have the top project, which has been the top project for some time now, they are in the right-of-way phase of it, and that is Sulfur Springs Road, I believe I have that graphic right here. It's largely a reconstruction, they're doing significant improvements at the intersection with Route 50, and there will be wide paved shoulders added that will accommodate bicycles, pedestrians, and somewhat different than our ultimate long-range plan of a four-lane divided roadway with separate bicycle and pedestrian facilities, however, as noted with previous projects, we're not necessarily doing the project we want, but the project we can afford. And I'll just note the other major road improvement projects are mostly made up of our own revenue-sharing projects. You see Renaissance Drive on there, which we have done a portion of, Martinsburg Pike on North Route 11 there, that's a revenue-sharing project, Tevis Street, Russell 150, which we were discussing earlier, which we have put a lot of revenue-sharing money on, is on there. Red Bud Road's on there as a bit of a placeholder to allow us to realign that to Snowden Bridge Boulevard, and we have our pending approval for the Greystone Access Road, which is really the Snowden Bridge Boulevard extension from Route 11 over the railroad tracks in the Greystone Project, and that's going to be about $4.5 million. Moving on to probably the least funded, but the part that gets the most attention, the paving of dirt roads in the county. Now, once again, this year, with the revenue program being the way it is, of course, last year, the General Assembly did pass a fairly significant new revenue program for transportation, however, their expectations for the flow of that revenue were in excess of what we're really getting, so we were not able to add new projects this year. We didn't have to remove any, so it's better than some previous years we've had to deal with, but we were not this year able to add because the revenue projections were a little too optimistic. You will note that Warm Springs Road is no longer at the top of the list, that's because it's been funded, it's supposed to be under construction this summer, and should be done around the turn of the fiscal year. So that's moving forward. That pushes Woodside Road to the top, Wright Road, Carter Lane, Packhorse Road, and Laurel Grove Road, we're already on our scheduled list, this carries forward from last year. The modification we did make is to Laurel Grove Road, it's the same project, we broke it into two segments, basically for housekeeping purposes, when we're using Edinburgh residency forces to do one of these projects. When it's under a certain amount of money, it's able to be designed and constructed all in-house, if it's over a certain amount of money, we have to reel Richmond into the mix, and it's just less efficient and costs more money, so we broke it into two projects. Moving on to the unscheduled list, we did add three new projects to the bottom of the list, doesn't mean they're the least important projects, it just means that in keeping with your adopted policy, we did not re-rank the roadways because we were not promoting any roadways. So at 21, 22, and 23, you see Sir John's Road, Mount Olive Road, and Shockey'sville Road has been added. Now, one thing we did to try and make things a little more clear to the public who may pull the plan down off our website, or if you happen to give them a copy of the plan, they want to see where the road is, particularly for those that live on the new roads, and they want to see that it actually got added, we just made clear that the roads are not re-ranked this year, and that they're only re-ranked in years that we actually are able to fund new projects, so they may or may not move up or down when that ranking process gets underway, so that we can only fund what are, under your adopted policy, the most beneficial projects. With that, there are members of VDOT staff here, led by Mr. Cliff Balderson, who is a residency engineer out of Edinburgh, and I can take any questions you may have.
Questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bishop, you said that even with the tax increase, we're not getting the money we thought we would get. Do you see any improvement in the next year or the next year? I know, I'm asking you, look into a crystal ball that you don't have, but have you any indication from VDOT that we may be getting increased funding to help alleviate some of these pressing demands that we have?
I expect it's probably going to be a year or two before we're able to add more projects to the scheduled list. As far as major projects, such as an Exit 307 or an Exit 310, those are very hard to predict, because formula funding of projects, it's gone out the window, it doesn't really exist anymore. So what we can do, as Frederick County, is a lot of what we've been doing, and why I think sometimes we've gotten money when others may have not, is keep our projects at the forefront, keep working hard on them, such as we have with Route 37, such as we did before that with 310, and have continued to do with 307, because that's how projects are getting funded. It's an open-mouth gets fed type of scenario, the most ready projects are usually what gets the money. So with VDOT in the current draft six-year program, having money for design on that, our highest priority segment of Route 37, the other work that we've been doing on that front, the testimony we made at the public hearing for the draft six-year improvement program promoting that project over, say, a reconstruction of Exit 313, not to be confused with redecking of the 313 bridge, which is important. Those are the kind of things we do to get those projects, but as far as being able to accurately predict, I'd be lying if I told you so.
Other questions to stand? Do VDOT folks want to present, speak, answer questions? Okay, thanks, sir. Then we'll conduct a public hearing on the 2014-2015 Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plans, and the proposed secondary road improvement plan for fiscal year 2015 through 2020 in Frederick County, and the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2015, and the latter two are in cooperation jointly with the Virginia Department of Transportation. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against these transportation plans? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Pleasure to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we adopt the draft update of the 2014-2015 Frederick County Primary Interstate Improvement Plans, and that the Virginia Department of Transportation Board of Supervisors have concluded their public hearing, and their secondary road improvement plans as well.
As well as the, okay, you got it. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second to the motion and need discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is a continued item, the conditional use permit 02-14 for Jessica M. Neff for a kennel. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request for a kennel for dog boarding. It's located 461 Laurel Grove Road. It's in the Back Creek Magisterial District. The board did hold a public hearing on April 23, 2014, and postponed action on this conditional use permit to allow the applicant to address the comments and concerns that were voiced at that public hearing. The applicant has met with staff and has addressed these concerns. If I could turn your attention to the map on your left to give you an orientation again on where this property is located on Laurel Grove Road. The property is outlined in black there on Laurel Grove Road. Gonna give you a bigger picture for the benefit not only of the board, but also the citizens who had spoken at the public hearing. Now it's your public meeting. Again, there's the kennel where it's located, some of the adjoining properties. Bring your attention to the rear of the property, if you can make it out there. There's a small dot there, red dot, that's showing where the kennel's gonna be. If you recall from what's in your pack that the applicant gave us an aerial of where she would like to put this proposed kennel at the rear of the property. The, again, staff worked with the applicant, and we have some conditions were added. There's been new, conditions have been modified. Those conditions are in your pack, and also will be out on the screen to your left. They are conditions 6 through 11, been modified. For the record, should the board find this used to be appropriate, the following conditions should be assigned to this conditional use permit. Condition number one, our review agency comments and requirements shall be complied with at all times. Number two, no more than 28 dogs should be permitted on the property at any given time. Number three, this CUP is solely unable to, for boarding a dog, excuse me, on the property. Number four, no employees other than those residing in the property shall be allowed. Number five, all the dogs should be controlled not to create a nuisance to any adjoining properties by roaming free or barking. Number six, the applicant will construct a 20 by 30 enclosed kennel in the rear of the property with a six-foot fenced outdoor play area. Number seven, the enclosed kennel house should be built with noise abatement construction material to reduce the dog barking, thus not exceed 50 DBA. A professional engineer licensed in Commonwealth or State of Virginia, excuse me, shall seal the plans of the kennel house indicating it has met that 50 DBA noise threshold. Number eight, the plans of the kennel house should be reviewed by Frederick County or by the county prior to any construction activity or operation of the kennel. Number nine, the kennel should have an appointment-only basis, meaning that there will be a drop-off and pickup of dogs. Number 10, the applicant should maintain a contract with their waste removal company. And number 11, all dogs must be confined indoors by 9:00 PM and not allowed out of doors prior to 8:00 AM. No more than three dogs may be outdoors at any given time. Number 12, any proposed business signs should conform the cottage occupation sign requirements and shall not exceed four square feet in size and five feet in height. And number 13, any expansion or modification of this conditional use permit will require approval of a new conditional use permit. Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you or any of the members of the board would have on this conditional use permit for a dog kennel for boarding only. Thank you.
Questions or clarifications from staff?
Questions?
Two questions. Number one, we heard someone speak earlier about restrictive covenants on adjacent or nearby properties. Are there any restrictive covenants, to your knowledge, on this property?
Yes, the restricted covenants on the property, whether the conditional use permit is being applied for does not, it's not part of that restricted covenant at all. It's actually the two lots that I think Mr. Coleman passed out that he showed, it's to the right-left of that property.
Yeah, but there aren't any other covenants that apply to this property, to the best of your knowledge?
No, sir.
The other thing, you have that item number, let's see, I forget what it was. Anyhow, it says, no employees other than those residing on the property shall be allowed. What happens in a situation where the residents want to go on vacation or need to go out of town for some event? Do they make everybody come pick their dogs up, or do they leave the dogs unattended?
It's pointed out in condition number nine, Mr. Hess, that to answer your question, the kennel's by appointment only, so if Ms. Neff is planning to go on vacation and not getting her business plan, but I would assume she would say that she's not open and not taking dogs at that time, and that's where we have, that she, we added the appointments only there. So they would be on vacation, and probably no dogs at the kennel at that time.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, sir. Back Creek.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Let me say, I appreciate everyone coming out this evening and expressing their views on this conditional use permit request. As you know, last month, I expressed my concern that I had not heard enough, had some questions formulated in my mind that wouldn't be answered and couldn't be answered at that particular meeting. The board graciously allowed me to postpone this action until this month so I could get that research done, and if it pleases the board, I would like to give you the results of that research before I make a motion.
Go ahead.
If it appropriate. Let me just talk about a few of the things I think that I've heard the most about with this conditional use permit. First is traffic. I tried to, as Mr. Bishop will attest, there's a book called The Institute of Traffic Engineers: Trip Generation Manual, which generally tells you how many vehicles you can expect for any particular business, residence, or any other venture that might generate traffic. There is no kennel trip generation data that we can find. However, the last traffic count made on Laurel Grove Road in that particular section indicated about 600 vehicles per day. Using the analysis that one of the people who spoke here used, if every available space, 28, if the owner would bring a dog in the morning, come back and pick it up in the evening every day, that would be 56 vehicles on that road in addition to what's already there. That's less than a 10% increase in traffic. My guess is that we're not gonna have that situation, so traffic, I must say, is not a real concern for me, so I would say that is not a deterrent. To Mr. Hess's question, I would assume that if, and I don't want to speak for the owners, certainly they can speak, if I left my dog there and found out no one was watching it, I would not bring the dog back. The other one, and two of the highest, probably the most intense, I guess, resistance to this, is devaluation of homes. Now, I got a sheet, as I think all of you did today, with an opinion that a dog kennel in close proximity to surrounding homes could negatively impact their future sales price. What I did not see with this document was comp values. What I did not see with this document was empirical data. I don't know if this person has been trained as a professional appraiser or not. I have actually contacted two appraisal firms, of which I've known and had contact with for over a decade. Separately contacting them and asking them that question, they, without hesitation, told me to ask anyone who would make this statement to provide comp values, empirical data to support that statement. I have not seen any. In checking with the Commission of Revenue's Office, she indicates that, to date, sales values have not decreased in any area where there is a kennel. And if I may, if I may interject, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask you, are there other kennels that have a CUP in the county?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lofton. Currently, Frederick County has 16 approved kennels in Frederick County.
Are they in RA areas? Am I?
Yes, sir, they are.
They are in the RA areas, okay. Thank you. So with 16 kennels utilizing a CUP in the RA area, it would appear to me that these professional appraisers, or Mrs. Murphy's office, would have seen some decrease in value. Now, I've heard there's internet searches, and that's all well and good, but I can't go to those places and those internet searches that may be far-flung from Frederick County. I'm looking at what's happening in Frederick County and how does that impact Frederick County residents. So I must say that I have not found any data that would support the supposedly well-documented devaluation of property. None. Thirdly, noise. That was my biggest concern is about the noise. And I know some people said that they bought their house because it was the idyllic, rustic, peaceful country living. I've lived in the country nearly all my life. There are all kinds of sights and sounds and smells that go with that kind of living. There's also been some talk that the residents out there have dogs. So are we to assume that if this CUP is approved, then any barking would actually come from that kennel or from the neighbor's dogs? And who would determine that? In order to find out if, in fact, that was a problem, I've visited several kennels, a couple of commercial kennels. I would pull up on the parking lot, turn the radio off, put the windows down. I would just sit there as people came and went. I heard no noise. Now, no dogs were outside, but I heard no noise from inside. I actually went to a commercial kennel not far from my house. I, they house 60 dogs. Their buildings are old. They're not built of the construction that is intended to be built here and certified by an engineer. When I pulled up, again, I did so very slowly, put the windows down, turned the radio off, and it was in a rural community. Nice houses around there. Nice houses around there. When I finally pulled into the driveway, I heard faintly two dogs barking out of one building. They had three dogs roaming in the yards, didn't bark at all. After I talked to the person there, I went through the neighbor's house, saw a car, thought I'll stop in here and I'll find out if, in fact, the neighbor has any problems. I did so, pulled in the driveway, stood on the porch, rang the doorbell a couple of times, got no response, but while I was there, I stood on the porch, and this house is only about 200 feet from that commercial kennel, and it's right on the side where the kennel proper is. So I stood there because there was someone else at the kennel. That person was talking to the employee there, they do have an employee. As that person was talking to the employee, I could not hear any dogs barking. As that person left, I could not hear any dogs barking, and I stood there on the porch, and I must have been standing in there too long because the person who was leaving actually stopped and looked my way. I didn't know if they thought I was gonna be robbing the house or just what my intentions were, but they did stop. So the community, actually, it appears, like all communities, take care of themselves. But I heard no barking. Now, this is a kennel has 60 potential boarding at any one time. I've had this kennel recommended to me by several other people who say that this is a well-run, well-maintained, and again, I did not have any smell to that kennel, and I was right at the buildings. With all that in mind, with the concessions that the owner is willing to make to try to eliminate any adverse impact to the neighbors, and I appreciate the additional concessions that they have made to do this, and looking at where the kennel's gonna be placed visually, as I looked at it from three different vantage points there, I don't know that I could even see the building when it's built. So all that taken into consideration, I really found no compelling reason not to recommend approval of this conditional use permit for the kennel, and I would make that motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Hess.
When the applicant spoke at the public hearing, she had indicated that her business plan allowed that the business could be profitable with something less than 28 dogs, and I'd like to propose an amendment to the approval that the number of dogs be reduced to 18 or perhaps 20 dogs.
Which?
20.
All right, we have a proposed amendment to the motion to approve with the reduction of dogs to 20, was it?
20.
20. Is there a second to that motion to amend?
I would second that.
All right, we have a second. Discussion on the motion. We understand it, from 28 to 20. Then we'll vote. Supervisor Wells?
This is the vote on reducing the number.
On the amendment, then we'll do the amended motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Supervisor Hess?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, so the amendment passes, and now we're on the amended motion. As is with a reduction in dogs from 28 to 20. Are we ready to vote? I'll take that as a yes. Supervisor Hess?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
No.
Chair votes yes, and so the motion does not pass. Logical conclusion would be to entertain a motion to deny.
Mr. Chairman, I approve with deny.
All right. We have a motion to deny. Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Wells?
Yes.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Hess?
Yes.
Chair votes no, and we are back at a tie. My best guess is that our best course of action would be to lay this till our next meeting, when a tie cannot happen and Supervisor Collins is on board. Do we have anybody else who will not be here at the next meeting?
I will not be at the next meeting.
Then we need to go a little further than that. I think we should have all hands on deck. Mr. Riley, what date?
That would be June the 26th.
All right, then I need a motion to postpone this vote for a final determination till the 26th, if you'd be so kind.
So move. Second, Mr. Chairman.
Who was it? Supervisor Lofton makes motion, Supervisor Hess makes a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye. Propose no. Then we'll see it again on the 26th. Board liaison reports, are there any? Citizen comments. This is the second portion of the meeting that the board sets aside for any citizen to address the board on any topic. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board? If so, please come forward, give your magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, I think all the standings are leaving, and so that's a no. We'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Are there any board supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor DeHaven?
For our neighbors that are interested in the R5 private street discussion, it has been reported out of Transportation. The Planning Commission dealt with it last week, and it should be before us shortly, and we'll watch for that date. Thank you for your input.
Any other supervisor comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Lofton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Maybe I was dreaming when we had our work session with the Social Services Board, because when I read the article in the Star this morning about how much money Winchester Valley Health was gonna lose if Medicaid isn't expanded, I have yet to see an article in the paper that says how much money Frederick County stands to lose if Medicaid is expanded in Virginia. So I'd like to see that information get out to the residents.
Mr. Riley, can send it over. I don't know if we can get it published.
Apparently, apparently, Mr. Chairman, they're not interested. We've sent them the information.
All right. Supervisor Hess?
Yeah, I won't take up much of the board's time to repeat the comments I made earlier. It's just really a suggestion that we consider in the future.
It's just really a suggestion that we consider in the future, hearing presentations from other departments. I think it was certainly that one from Social Services was enlightening, and I'm not after a motion or anything binding, just a suggestion.
But perhaps we'd be guided by the, what's called HR committee, and you let me know when you think particularly interesting.
Okay. Happy to.
Unless you want to go through some rotation of regular work sessions.
We'll come back with a specific recommendation.
Okay. Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to emphasize the information part of the Public Works Committee report on the update on the new Round Hill Fire Station and Event Center. I hope you pay attention to that as far as, we've had some discussions as far as size of prototype, which really doesn't exist, versus the current design that we have. And I just want to share with all the board members, any of those questions that you have, please read that. But if you've got questions and you want details, please feel free to call me, and I'll be glad to sit down with you, but I don't want to do that tonight. Thank you.
Any other supervisor comments?
Mr. Chairman, as supervisor in the Opec District where the private roads situation is, I want to thank the Transportation Committee for working and moving this on to planning and for planning to working on. I know it's taking a long time, but we're gonna get there. I'd encourage it to come to a public hearing so that we can bring resolution to this discussion on private roads, and give these people an opportunity to know exactly where they're going to be. Number two, in consideration of the people of Frederick County and the lender and the buyer, when we're talking about the Russell 150 property, I just want to voice that I am encouraging the board, all the parties, this is a tough issue, but I'd encourage all of us to do what we can, work as hard as we possibly can to bring resolution to this also. I think it can be a win-win situation. We just need to bring the parties together, and maybe that means more meetings to do that. And I'm certainly more than willing to spend time to do that, so those are my two comments for this evening. Thank you.
Any other supervisor comments?
Mr. Chairman, approve adjourned.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned.